Just a difference.
Okay, you guys were wrong.
Okay, motion open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Show the voting house, so the planning board meeting on April seventh, two thousand and fifteen.
You got the agenda?
I do, I do. Um, we get the planning board business and minutes to approve. We got, I'll just read it, associates member hearing to open and close.
Yeah, let's get rid of some of this stuff before.
Four forty-one, then we have Pecker Lane, Stonebridge, Stonebridge on the A and R? Is that up there?
Those three houses.
Just kind of slow down, I mean, we're taping it and everything, but one of the things that we found out is we gotta have written as well.
Okay.
And if they approve the minutes, then I can throw these away.
Uh, labor of the board to hear the folks that are here first.
Well, so, let's go by the agenda.
Well, it's here, but there's no times, they're just written.
Right, agenda on it though, the way you wanted to do it.
Okay, alright, so.
The three seventeen fifteen minutes.
Okay.
On making that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so the voting house, and it's true. Um, next up is associate member hearing. Motion open here.
Um, I gotta read, um, if you can, a little bit from what I posted. What are we doing? What can we do first? I'm gonna read the entire one. This is the planning board associate member, the article number unknown, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding new section fifteen oh five, planning board and subsection fifteen oh one, associate member to fifteen, uh, fifteen oh five point one to associate member to fifteen oh five point two, removal as follows and take any action relative thereto. Fifteen oh five planning board, fifteen oh five one associate member, the planning board.
Go back a bit.
Okay, just for the record, we opened at seven thirty-five, um, we've approved the three seventeen fifteen minutes. Reading the article, the planning board associate member to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding new section fifteen oh five planning board and subsections fifteen oh five point one associate member to fifteen oh five point two removal as follows or take any action relative thereto. Fifteen oh five planning board, fifteen oh five point one associate member. The planning board and the board of selectmen may jointly appoint an associate member to the planning board as provided in chapter forty-eight, section nine of Massachusetts general law. The term of each such appointment shall be for no more than one year and shall terminate on the June thirtieth immediately following such appointment. The chairman of the planning board may designate the associate member to sit on the board for purposes of acting on a special permit application in the case of the absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any member of the planning board or in the event of a vacancy on the board. Fifteen oh five point two removal. The board of selectmen and the planning board may together remove a duly appointed alternate member for cause unless such removal is otherwise prohibited or restricted by law. So, we need to, tonight, this is gonna be the last time we're gonna be doing these bylaws, they're gonna.
Right, so we have a motion to open on the hearing for that, the continued hearing.
Okay.
So, who wants to apply that?
Yeah, make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so the continued hearing, open on the associate member, okay. Uh, motion to approve, the article is written.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, say do I say aye?
Alright.
Aye. So the voting house.
Okay, just slow down for a time, you know, you have to do this, but, you know, it's, we gotta get these down.
Any objections from the ayes? None noted. Can you cut up, open a motion and close?
Um, so that's a motion to... Okay, accept. The article is read. Okay, the, the motion to accept the article is read, so I need a motion to do that.
So motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay.
Now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay.
Uh, okay, then we need the motion to close this hearing.
Motion to close. Okay, I'll second, but make the motion close.
Alright, aye. Hearing closed at seven forty-four.
Okay, close at what time?
Seven forty-four.
Seven forty-four. Okay.
Yeah. Motion open up marijuana hearing.
You ready?
Uh, give me a minute. Openly continue. Hold on. Okay.
Motion open up marijuana, continue the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Give it to Bobby. This is second, you're right. Alright, um.
So, and you're in open at seven forty-five. Now, that's a long article.
Okay.
Do you wanna just, uh?
I wanna paraphrase, we didn't change anything.
Okay.
Open at seven forty-five five. The article basically is, deals with more protection for the town rather than being in favor of medical marijuana dispensaries. Just simply every city in town and the Commonwealth under the, with the legislature's law, the legislature passed about three years ago has to now have a dispensary within its bounds. And where we're putting the dispensaries is within the industrial zone, uh, which is rather large and it's, for that, for that part of the town that's, you know, still be industrial. And, um, you know, we wanted to keep it away from residential areas, the police kinda came in and said the same thing. Uh, the other thing is to, uh, it has more room in that zone anyhow for off-street parking and, um, places to carry the business such as this. It ought, the, uh, the bylaw also has a lot of the rules right out of the legislation that created the marijuana dispensaries, you know, that have to be followed by those who receive a license. And, uh, it's like if, uh, there's any problems whatsoever at all with them, uh, the article, the, um, the zoning article would cover, um, you know, also removal. Uh, at that point, suspension of the license and, um, you know, the, the state would then get brought in on it, but, um.
So what's the section number, Jim?
Uh, sixteen hundred, it's section sixteen hundred, special requirements for registered marijuana dispensaries that runs sixteen hundred point one all the way through sixteen hundred point seven point two.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion accept.
Now, let's just put down something here, Bobby. Alright, motion to accept.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the voting house?
Yeah.
Article accepted, good town meeting is written.
Okay. Then we need to close the hearing.
Motion to close.
Make the motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up is four forty-one.
We really got our page. It's been recommended that we have a signature.
What?
Folks.
The folks at the town, we gotta turn here. So, just put the date up on the.
Next up is the special permit at four forty-one Main Street, and we have a request to continue by the engineer.
Yes, and the request to continue was because they hired the hazardous waste material officer, John Clemmons, who is a highly educated man in that field, and they're going over there and here and there, and ready.
So, we have a request by Larry Argen to extend the scheduled hearing of four seven to the four twenty-one fifteen hearing. Uh, for the purpose of hiring John Clemmons for the initial review of the hazardous waste plant.
So, the request is to?
Extend to the four twenty-one. Uh, motion accept.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the voting house, show extension of four twenty-one for four forty-one. Next up, Pecker Lane, A and R. Okay, we need one big copy and one bylaw. This is the one we had some changes on, we have a one in forty square, driveway add, and move the signature blocks around. The locust, the CBA circle, and the footprint, house footprint wasn't on the circle, so it now is. Um, noting the garage and notations of the plans. Just what they are, it's just.
But I have the book in period, that's just a lot, lot, let's read through. Book a page, book a page.
Okay.
Page.
The page everywhere.
Page four.
And that, so. That was that.
Right, do you have a check for five hundred made up to the town of Groveton for the A and R?
Motion endorse the plan, am I?
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, say do I say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the voting house. Show endorsement of the plan.
Uh.
Just to start talking. Did anyone bring any on my line? Yeah, he's got one.
Oh, good.
He did ask.
You got one?
Got a check, we got a.
No, no, it's my, oh, he's got one.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, and the form, any applications?
Does that pin in the fence? Uh.
It's there.
It's in the fence, isn't it?
Exactly.
How about this bin? Do you know where that is? You know?
I didn't, I didn't get much of that site work up there. Okay, and we got our C on Groveton.
Town.
Town Groveton, yeah. Okay, the form eight plans. So we want to accept your, uh, your disc for work function, whatever. And then we'll show you on the, so. You have all three of that form eight? Uh, it's normal? Okay. Who does?
Yeah.
Let's put it written. Okay, and that's sign a paper copy. Send that down. This is ours. So you guys signed a paper copy for your records?
Right.
And then you signed my, what did you put it? And we put it together as well?
Did they sign it?
Yeah, once you put it down, you can roll.
They didn't sign this paper.
Okay.
Oh.
Well, you guys haven't signed it yet.
No, we didn't start the my law.
Oh, you did, we're spinning around.
Oh, where's the paper?
Right there, paper, yeah. Right there.
No pen? Bob, you have a pen?
You need one of them, records? Uh, gotta get a minute. Okay. Three form eights, three timestamps with the town clerk.
Okay.
She did one, we did one, she did one. Take one of those.
You want to take one with me, put one in your box?
You got it. Okay, then, um, and then we'll take it, match it up with this, paper copy.
Okay.
Sign this in a second, okay? And then, um, you take this down, six certified, not, not one certified and six copies, that's six certified. And then, just frame it to us, put it in a box.
Okay.
Okay, I'll assume before, you're gonna sell that, or you're gonna build on it, or you're gonna?
I would, I think we're gonna build.
Like right away, or just?
Uh, it's undecided yet.
Okay, 'cause once this goes to the registry outside of just.
Oh, alright, yeah, we'll be weeks.
Okay.
We don't move that quick.
So, you got that? We'll just endorse it a few seconds, any questions still?
I want to see please. Do you need this one? Keep this one.
No.
Walter, keep it there, so Bob can sell it.
Okay, I'm just gonna come around, 'cause I got the slack here at all. So then.
Why do you gotta have another lot?
Just the two, the one existing and one out. I'm not really sure how to handle this. We had a negotiation with a party across the street, we had a lot that was large enough to split. The surveyor actually kinda started it. So, by our time delay, we essentially ended up with another A and R part that I picked up yesterday. I don't know if that's something we can submit to you guys tonight, but we, since this.
We'll look at it.
You're tired, man?
No, I think there was two there.
Agenda with it, okay.
Yeah, can we keep this and look at it?
Sure.
That looks interesting, pool, okay, yeah. Okay, yeah, we can get you on the twenty-first.
Do we have any questions, either all up in pool or anything at this point?
I'm just looking at the, uh.
This is.
Back to the driveway thing on the, on this plan. Is it? It's not located on the plan. On the existing. Oh, for the existing house.
Existing, yeah.
That's easy, you get, you get back on the twenty-first, same, but that's, you know, that's it, you get the CBA, you get the calculations, you get everything in the, in the right order down here. Um, notes.
In this.
Yeah, the purpose of the plan.
That's what I'm.
Purpose of the plan.
Who's hole in the wall realty trust?
That's in another parcel that's just out there.
Oh.
So, how many of you folks?
What's the build on, on that roadway, how many more houses could you?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at, I think.
Because that road needs to be upgraded substantially if you're gonna keep adding A and R's.
Is this across the street from where you built, you're going to do something?
Yeah, this, this one is.
So that's not you guys, hole in the wall realty trust?
Well, what I'm trying to say is the new ones, are they right across the street from that?
Yep.
You mind paving that part of the road?
Oh, they're.
We have every intention.
Okay.
But, uh, they're gone, I'm not gonna sign a building permit unless they do, we're gonna have an agreement.
Okay.
So, so we're working on a design for that, we're really thinking of getting some nice, nice improvements on that way.
Okay, good.
But I was just trying to get at what Bob had said, how many you're gonna, you know, all of the.
You're building.
Just for our information, too, you know.
There's also the drainage.
Village.
Yeah. There's also the drainage, so think, um, if you're making driveways that feed the elevation into it, then you gotta think of the people on Main Street, everything downhill, and they're very narrow down there, and there's no drains that I know of until it gets out to Main Street.
Yeah, there's a catch basin at the intersection of Pecker and Main Street.
Right, 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 that's where it is.
Is this paid back to you?
I built that potentially, so.
Probably goes to the.
Probably here.
Yeah, okay, that's, you know, it's only twenty feet wide.
Yeah, if you post it like here and then up the other way.
How, how much is it paid then, is it twenty wide?
No.
Or it's like twelve feet? Okay.
So we're trying to go as wide as we possibly can.
We talked about maybe six. You wanna put the, um, whatever improvements you're gonna do, should probably do on the plan, just get them on there, unless you want them in a separate. Kind of thing.
I thought I would do it when the building put up.
Yeah, okay.
Try to do it after evening.
We definitely wanna see topographical lines on the property, each property to show where the floor is off the property.
Yeah, that's, well, that's a good point, just bring it up.
It's on here.
Yeah, it's.
You got topo.
Topo on.
He's got it on here, yeah.
Yeah, it's on here. Okay, so twenty-first for the next one, so we ditch on this one.
Yeah, sure.
Right, that's the way you guys want it, on it?
Yeah.
Are there any, uh, so, can we just get a list of what, what the changes, so that we?
Yeah, just the driveway.
The driveway, the existing house.
Random?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
We're gonna, you know, check it.
No, let's go there.
Driveway, location. Notes on the pool, um, and anything else? Just except on that, anything else?
Is there another, the pool would be?
Look, it's on, it's on the actual pool, but it's not, uh, you know, sorry, Tom.
So they want like a pool note to be over here?
Yeah, you know, pools be filled in, this one over there.
Pool note.
And then, um, driveways.
Mm-hmm.
Now, is this on the existing CBA? Is, is, um, have you actually calculated that out, is this staying, right?
Yep.
Okay, so just slide the circle over the dwelling.
Sure.
And then note the pre-existing non-conformance, see the pre-existing non-conformance.
Not certain that this circle will slide all the way forward.
Well, that's where your pre-existing non-conformance comes in.
Yeah, understand it.
So, yeah.
So this corner of the garage is gonna.
Yeah, so if you, if you zip this over.
Sure.
Yeah, just.
As hard as you can.
Um, lots two, pre-existing non-conformance, CBA calculation, uh, circle, et cetera. That's usually over there when you go, this is why you just park it right over it. Okay, so it's captured in, in the driveway.
So it's not too pre-existing non-performant.
Yeah, yeah. Driveway, anybody else, guys?
Uh, just make sure copies of the town clerk's on his, right, and then come in and look at it.
CDs.
Residence, whatever.
Okay. There you go, see you on the twenty-first? Did they have a sign?
So we're signed here, we take this over.
Yep, and he's got the other stuff, six certified, if you come in the twenty-first, you can bring them in before then or after, so I don't know what day you can go with this, so.
So we'll see you before then to, with each changes.
Yeah, just give a call. Give a call, you know, this'll prove it, sure.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Stonebridge, three A and R.
He's not here, but Ann called me, town clerk, and there's been three, no, no, three people asking to look at those plans. He promised last, like, the last meeting, he was gonna go to the previous engineer and D V.
Yeah.
And get plans and drop one off there, so I told her to tell the president I was looking to see the sort of plans in the town clerk's office, what it's supposed to be, that we get them tonight, so someone needs to call him, and, uh, Jim, you have his name now, you got that?
Yeah, I got somewhere.
You, you know what, they can go into the buildings, right, and then get a copy of it.
Good luck.
Okay, well, that's a motion, alright, so we'll, we'll track that down to the copy of the plan over to clerk's office. Okay, moving to the next one, Skip Sheen Way. Yep.
Show where Skip Sheen used to live.
I like this one a lot better.
Okay, we get this. We actually asked for that.
Might be good to.
All those lots that he split up. Skip Sheen has owned it.
Oh, he's owned it.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, there's that.
Yeah.
They own Pecker Lane, it's right between Gardner Street and Main Street.
So are we on the continued hearing?
It's like this.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Motion open up the, uh, continued hearing on Skip Sheen Way.
Motion to open up the continued hearing, that guy, Skip Sheen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so the voting house, show the hearing open at three oh five.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, since the last time, we've received ninety-eight and a half percent plans, um, and the, uh, the last piece of the puzzle is part of the stormwater management bylaw permit, um, which was the roadway cost estimate for the bond amount. Um, so I've talked with Mr. Green, um, past couple of days, reviewed the plans. Uh, we do have to cross some Ts and dot some Is, I'm, I'm really calling it housekeeping at this point, but, um, you know, I, I think that the first order of business, now that I've received a copy of the cost estimate and reviewed it, and I've had some suggestions, and, um, I wanna increase the amount slightly over what Mr. Green provided. Um, but we're looking at probably five hundred and forty thousand dollars for a bond amount.
Are you doing bond, or which one?
Probably, probably do a bond. Given, given the uniqueness of the property, that the excavation that has to be done for the stormwater system, um, the off-site, extension of the water main, that all kinda weeds into the, into the cost, it was a lot higher than probably both of us thought initially, but, um, I'm comfortable with, uh, the five hundred and forty thousand dollar amount.
What did you put in?
Four hundred and sixty thousand.
Four sixty or something, so, I mean.
I had to go by state guidelines.
Yeah, and that's.
It's a bit harder, 'cause the one number we were really hard on was, was the excavation.
Yeah. We were close on the quantity, but then the unit rate, you know, I had two and a half times what he had.
Okay.
But if you go by the mass DOT standards, which is what the bylaw says, then, you know, you're kinda stuck with that, so.
Okay.
You know, four sixty is probably okay to get the work done, but when you add on the fifty percent contingency and, yeah.
Yeah, well, we always had that on anyway.
So, okay, so i- i- if you accept that, I know you haven't seen a piece of paper on it yet, but, um, if you accept that, I guess the first order of business would be to allow that number to, to carry, and you could act on the stormwater management management bylaw permit, which will also be referenced in the decision. And then, in the meantime, I've drafted, um, a memorandum of decision, which I know you haven't seen, but, uh, to you now, I've highlighted the segment, the sections that might need revision here and there, we're just talking about some dates, but, um.
Are we left?
Using the template for the, uh, decision memorandum, you know, I drafted this and added in the waivers that were voted on, um, the documents that. I drafted this and added in the waivers that were voted on, um, the documents that were submitted, uh, probably have to fill in some dates on review letters and correspondence. But, um, I've drafted up a copy of the decision.
We lack that?
Oh, is four forty-one coming in tonight?
No, it does, no.
Continue to the twenty first.
Continue to the twenty first.
Okay, so this is a draft to review for next time, you're gonna fill in the, the arrangements?
Yeah, it's basically complete, I have to, if there is action tonight, I would fill in those dates, um, you know, I obviously can't fill it in until.
I can get them, I got all.
Until the beginning.
And also getting back to the bond, uh, the G, G one and G two, which are the bond performance plans, uh, the forms. So if you submit those to us, fill them in, and then also, you know, five hundred and hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah, we're.
Schematics showing the price, then we go over it and make sure and vote it to approve it and.
Yeah, I think we intend to absorb this sucker, when, when can you get the, uh, the line item numbers, so these two gentlemen can.
I can have it to you on D O two.
Okay, so that'd be good, and so, okay, and then we also understand there's a name, name change proposal, okay, now, just a point of order question, if we're changing the name, and you got the, do you have the approval yet from the police department?
No, I'll get that, I checked the list and it's not on that list, but I'll get that.
Yeah, we still got that, okay, so if you get that.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think we should be changing the recording plans too, because it's.
I wasn't even aware of that, so.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Yeah, so this needs to.
The bylaws will change, yeah.
Well, and then, and a set of.
Plans.
Yeah, 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 you should put some plans out with the new name change on it, so.
Yeah.
Why don't we, um, as far as the planning goes, uh, we should probably fly a motion to approve the name change now, at least get that out.
Yeah, dear Ron was, has exist.
That already exists, I'm gonna go Sunset Circle.
Sunset Circle.
I made a motion that we approve the name change.
Second.
All in favor, so you're gonna say aye?
Aye.
Aye, show the voting, yes, show the name change, and the, uh, plans, milars, decisions, everything now referenced. With Sunset Circle.
And then have to get a letter signed by the police in emergency, just give a copy to Ann so that she'll know.
Yeah, she's gonna know, and, and, and I would, just for clarity.
Yes.
Give her the letter, and the new set of plans right away, so she knows. Um, it's gonna cost us some paper, but. Okay, so.
Saying that a lot lately, Scott, yeah.
I don't care.
Yeah, you don't care?
The pieces down are bad, everyone's guys brutal.
Bob and I both looked over.
Um, okay, Wally, yeah.
Bob and I both looked over the retaining wall, and, uh, you said that the U drafter got just raised it a foot, everything else is the same?
Yeah, um, I, I got, um, the copy that I forwarded you this morning, and, um.
Which is this one?
After I took a look at it and compared it to the site plans, there was a discrepancy, so I called the designer, they got in touch with Shea Concrete, they generated another drawing, which is not a stamp, which I have with me, um, which makes the change, um, but, but the two of them were different by a foot in elevation, so clearly that's something that you can't.
Yeah, okay, great.
So that's, has been fixed, but the drawing is not stamped, but I'm sure that'll happen, you know, between now and the time that you endorse the drawing. Should you be so inclined?
Alright, so what's, what's next with you folks on? So we got, we got this to review, you got approval on the name change, um.
If it be your pleasure without the piece of paper, you know, I'm fairly confident about the bond amount, so if you wanted to approve.
Take a look at it.
Stormwater management portion, you could dispense with that in the hearing process.
Okay.
If you wanna do it all at once, that's fine too.
No, I'm trying to ask for.
If I ask for overtime, is that, I mean, I think that's what I thought we were, uh.
It looks like it's gonna be, um, I mean, with the forty numbers, we always have those in a line item to look at them, because something always pops up, I mean, the number sounds good, but.
That's a huge, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, what is it, the tail, it's like.
Yeah, and, you know.
So that's just, that's a quickie, and if you can get it in print to these two guys beforehand or email, they have time to look at it, or, like, typically, we would have had this, and I know you just did it, but.
I have a right.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, um, so what else is left?
Could we vote on it?
Can we vote on it?
As long as Bob and I look at it and agree, we can do it.
It's still not gonna make any difference, um, the stormwater management part dispensing, I missed your, uh.
It's the special permit process, that was the last piece.
Yeah, so we just weighed that on, yeah, because you did the calculation.
Um, the impervious area was reduced enough, so we didn't need the special permit for water resources.
Yeah.
But there is still a stormwater management bylaw, and the bond amount is included within that.
Within that.
Okay, so, so you put them with the five forty number?
Yeah.
So, and we, yeah, so, so what are you, are you asking for dispensary of the?
I work for you.
Yeah, so I'm trying to figure out what you, normally, all the stuff to prove, sign, boom, done, and it's not gonna speed up any difference between now and next week, so, but what, what's your?
Well, if it's, um, doesn't it speed up the process in regards to having the, the project voted on, um?
I'll get voted on next week.
What's that?
On the next meeting, there's nothing left, right?
Is that?
Yeah, I mean, as long as this paperwork is.
Actually, two weeks.
Yeah.
It's two weeks.
Yeah, as long as the paperwork is in order, um.
So it gives you time to get the draft, you get the waivers, get anything else, okay, we should close the hearing.
The hearing was closed last time.
Right, so then we're, we're still back to paperwork, you know?
Well, we're, what we're doing is we're doing an M O D.
Right.
Which comes after you close the hearing.
Right.
I can, I can get all this stuff for next meeting, I mean.
I have it all, but the items in yellow are the things that are gonna happen tonight.
What, what are you up against that is a difference of time, what, what's?
I'm trying to get going with, with things here.
Yeah, what, I started out there today, but what, what are you trying to?
I mean.
What milestone you're trying to do? Because it makes no difference, because we can't, we don't have the numbers, we can't endorse, you can't record, we can't sign the milars, you can't do any of that, so we need to.
Well, we don't, right, we don't have.
Well, what are you, what are you trying to do?
So it doesn't matter whether, if it, if the meeting is closed and voted, uh, on it, and that comes in the next meeting to get signed?
I can do that anyway.
What's that?
No, but that's, that's, that's pretty normal, so, but you must be in a right to do some, what?
No, I'm just, I'm used to it in Wakefield, what they normally do is they vote it, and then the next meeting, it comes in and gets all endorsed and stuff, um, I don't know, wh- what's the process?
Just what we're doing, we're doing.
Well, you're changing the name, I mean, you gotta change.
Yeah, you change, you got all the, all the stuff's gonna change, uh.
Have we decided on a bond? Do you have, have you decided on that?
That's.
We have a number, yeah.
No, no, I mean, the, what form?
Oh, that was what I was asking, are you going with a bond, or do you go on a cash passbook, or are you going?
Was Bill coming in tonight?
What's that?
Was Bill coming in tonight?
No, Bill wasn't coming in tonight, and, uh, it was gonna be, it was gonna be a bond, I, we were saying, I'm just starting an insurance bond on that.
No, that's why I just asked him to bring in the schematic showing all the prices, and then also the G two and the, uh, G two one, which are performance bonds that have to be filled out, we vote to accept that amount, and then that's turned in the two forms to Denise, with your either bond, uh.
Is that a separate vote from the voting of the subdivision?
Yeah, all this stuff gets voted in.
So it's a separate vote?
Everything's voted in, and then it gets recorded in the M O D.
Right, I, I had emailed you those forms.
Correct, and then I talked with Denise.
What did she say?
She said you can do it after the, after the vote.
Is she okay with the bond, because we have trouble with bonds?
No, she would, I mean, she was fine.
Yeah, we gotta see if the language is on that bond, the planning board needs to have the authority to pull it within.
It could be a letter of credit that they wanna do from a bank.
Yeah, the same thing, the same, the same thing. She, um. The letter of credit, the, the, the issues that we've had with, with both of those, because we, we had it on, um, Pinot, we had it on another one, uh, where we had to pull it, and it's like takes forever, so the language has to be in the letter of credit, that if the town goes in and gets, and seizes the bond for whatever reason, it's only had to do that once, and it's usually at the end. Um, then we need a seven-day turnaround. The town has its first authority in position to call in the bond, without the hokey dogs you approve and they're approving, all this other stuff.
Insurance company.
Yeah, yeah, that language has gotta be explicit.
The only other job that has to be in perpetuity, it can't expire in a year, that happened one time.
And, and then the poor builder had to go chasing through hoops to get it renewed, so, so that's why the, the, the cash passbook is the best deal for everybody, because as soon as you get a hundred thousand dollars worth of work done, the next day, you pull a hundred thousand dollars out of it.
I don't think they're gonna wanna do that.
Who's they?
I'm being, what?
Who's they?
They use Wallace Capital.
Who's, who's representing them? Oh, who's, who's on their board?
Me, no. No, I'm not on there, all right, take that.
It's, it's choice on how he wants to do it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you got one of the things.
We have, uh, the forms with the prices.
So, so you've got, but is there anything else that you're doing out there, construction-wise, or anything else, that you need approval on between now and two weeks?
I'm just going forward, that's another thing I wanna keep going forward, with, I've already started the trees, uh, out there and stuff. I just wanna, uh, I'm under, you know, I thought this was gonna be built a lot quicker than the process has been, uh, and I'm under a time, you know, I'm under the gun regards to getting this road in, I wanna be done with this, you know, I have other projects coming up that I gotta get to too, it's really messing me up.
But, you know, you should have asked for that name change last meeting.
Yeah, that should have a long time.
Then you would have had that changed.
Well, what, what is the, I mean, I, so you're saying the name is, is.
Because we're gonna record it, we can't.
Right, but I don't have the milar anyway, so.
Yeah, well.
No, but every document's gotta get changed over, but that, that's really not a big deal.
What, what's this one thing, it's on page three, they have, once you provide an area for school children use while waiting for school.
Yeah, that's one of ours.
Yeah, that's in the template, um, and I, I kinda highlighted it because I thought it was worthy of discussion, I mean, y'all want a safe place for kids to wait for school.
That started with, um, Valley Farm?
Yeah.
When they had, because they bought, because they bought there for the kids to hang around, because it was a big subdivision.
But there's not a lot of room here to do that, except if you do it at the cul-de-sacs, so now the process to pull away in.
It's really, it's so room.
It's, it doesn't make sense in this case, because they've got sidewalks, but even if it's a, it's, it's worthy of discussion and.
But if, even if it's a six by six grassed area, that's just off the road, that's all, they put a gazebo.
Because of the orientation of the entrance road, it's just not allowing you to put, so.
No, just, just off to the sidewalks. You have the road edge.
Alright, then we're leaving in the, the, the.
It's a park bench, yeah.
Yeah, that's it, perfect, I mean, they don't have that many kids out there, so that'll work.
Okay. So again, that's why I highlighted, so.
What's coming up?
There's an area where, when you have the houses, because of the.
On marijuana.
So. On the side of the road, over here, just have a, you get the sidewalk that comes in, okay, and then somewhere in there, just a place for the kids to stand for a school.
At the intersection, just near the park.
Because, uh.
I, I don't want a park bench in front of interest.
Somebody put one up, you can put a park bench, you can put a, a road, you can do just a piece of grass.
You'll, you'll have people hanging out, no.
So, so put, put a, just mow there?
Yeah.
That's, that's usually what it is.
It's a grass, it's a. That's what we just discussed.
Yeah.
They, they cut sidewalks, so. If that's safe enough, obviously, they don't want you to get fired.
So, yeah, what, whatever you want.
That's the camel that broke the, that broke the camel's back.
Steps he has to do, but he's.
Okay, so.
Yeah, only we can fire you.
The Rossford Memorial Park.
He has to change that, we can't, we can't give him.
So come in here, come in in two weeks, okay, and here's what we wanna say, okay, we need all the G forms, we need your performance bond, we need your new plans with all the new names, we need your letter from the police and fire, that's already timestamped from the clerk and all that stuff, so that's gonna be in, you need this square way, we need a list, we need a full list of the bond, we need the language of the bond.
I have a question, so when I come in with that.
Yeah.
You're gonna sign everything that night?
No, well, they can't sign the drawings that night.
No, you gotta go, because you gotta, this goes first, but that doesn't matter, the memorandum's gotta get, gotta get, get signed.
When are your plans get signed?
After this gets reported.
After the appeal period.
And, um, so you've gotta have the language, that, that's gonna be your trick, getting, uh, the language for the bond, if you're doing a bond. So.
The language?
Yeah.
All right.
And letter credited or wherever it is, and, and the G's, the G forms filled out.
So your main concern that it says for seven days, correct, and it runs, uh.
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity.
Yeah, for the amount, town has, has first right to pull, within seven days, it shall get the funding required, not maybe on Tuesday, et cetera, et cetera. It's gotta be some pretty strong items, that's why nobody does that thing anymore, we, we haven't done one of those in a long time, we usually go with the cash passbook, because, uh, it's easier to just pull the money out.
Yeah, that, that's great, but, you know, I'm bored, uh, no, the, the bank, I don't know what the, the capital laws get more.
Okay.
What they, they can do what they want on there.
They can write a check, put it into the passbook account too, so it doesn't matter, it's gonna be sitting there, so, uh, okay, what else you need?
So we can go back on the twenty first.
Right, right.
Just a quick question, the letter of credit portion.
Yeah.
So that can be from any commercial lender or anything like that, correct?
That's legitimate, yeah, legitimate commercial lender.
Legitimate commercial lender.
Preferably local, not.
Legitimate commercial, licensed commercial lender.
So, but, yeah, but you have to.
Not Jimmy the Greek.
This is Acme Capital.
I, I hope so.
All right. Wiley, that's a little road runner on, but it's a legitimate company.
This must be a Bonnie Frank, uh, son.
Actually, Acme Safe and Town, which I thought was interesting. Um, so, that's it?
Right.
Okay, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
I know, hey, just a quick question, uh, I know this is at my risk anyway, all right, but you guys are all gonna vote good for this, correct?
Because i- i- if it meets the rulebook, it flies, that's, that's it, and easier to make sure it does.
Right, and I'm out there, I'm just letting you know, I went out there.
I saw you out there, I don't know what you're doing, but I saw you out there, you might wanna tell the neighbors.
I have been, I've gone all the ways, that's why you don't see any neighbors here, right?
No, that's good.
No phone, no phone calls.
It's usually where we get phone calls.
The crews are coming down.
Couple of neighbors called me, and I explained during that you were just.
I went, I went to my main neighbor.
Hey, hey, Bill's out in the inner roadway, you were clearing some of his stuff.
Yeah.
And be careful with the traffic, talk to the P D, see if they need somebody out there.
It was so awesome today when I was dropping off the big tree, but, uh, it was really nice, really nice again.
Get somebody out there though.
Uh, on the thing, and I just, uh, I'll keep it neat and everything like that.
Yeah, because if you need a detail, they'll tell you.
Yeah, they'll say one detail, they'll detail them, but there's not that much traffic going in and out of this.
Ninety seven, uh, Salem Street's got what, eighteen, no, uh, nine thousand.
Yeah.
Nine thousand cars a day, and then combined it's about seventeen.
I'm saying, I don't have much traffic going in and out of there.
Yeah, oh, you, yeah, I mean, I like, it's not there at Salem Street.
If I get all this done, okay, do you want me to just come over the can, let you drop it off?
Yeah.
And then you can just type.
Well, it, it'll be done once you make the votes, that's really the only thing we need to fill in, is the dates, you make a vote on the stormwater management book to approve.
And can you get us this stuff, like a?
Electronify, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, before, because, you know.
Yeah, I get timing, we, we finished it today, so.
Yeah, well, hats off for getting it done quick, so, um, okay, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay.
Craftchuck.
Craftchuck, have you heard anything about?
No.
I talked to him on the phone, and, uh, he's working on his bond, and, uh.
Oh, sorry, you just told my guy.
He's working tonight, so he couldn't come in, I emailed him the G one and G two form, so he's working on it. We already approved the assessment for the down at two hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay. It's two, um, this is to the water board from, from Old Town, so.
Do you need me for anything else for Craftchuck?
Nope.
You're still just hearing from, right? If you're waiting to hear that.
Any understanding bills on Craftchuck or, uh, Slap Green, just email me.
Okay, yeah, same you stayed on February last time, we got Craftchuck, we were waiting to hear on one little piece of information, and. Yeah, Craft Shop, we were waiting to hear on one little piece of information, and he was off and running, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, he was just doing the, uh, bond stuff, he was a little confused how that went to, so we kinda pointed him in two directions and see what he got.
Alright, folks, thank you.
Yep, I did.
Okay.
Oh, good, like, I already, uh, apparently.
There, did you get everything out of the box today?
Today, yeah, that's what I was hoping.
Is this it, there's some plan there, or something?
Yes, that's, uh, Marty, Marty, it's, uh, new, new house, subject system.
Alright, alright, there's nothing to do, I was.
No, no, good, okay.
New house, most recent two hundred and thirty seven, so you got a subject system.
Alright.
Uh, so, I see Marty out, oh, yeah.
Why don't we introduce the lady and let her explain to the audience on the TV?
Um, it's just what I put in the letter that I wrote there, that I see it as. Emergency dangerous situation. I've been there now for seventeen, eighteen years, and if you look at the map that you have on your paper, um, it's really a crazy situation. I don't actually have a copy of that map with me tonight.
I got it ready, so, and all the number, nice job, boss, by the way.
What do we thought about?
We're talking about the street.
Just gonna.
Oh, straight.
Murray Avenue.
Murray Avenue, Murray Court, and Murray Road.
Now, where's?
There are three Murrays all connected to each other, and it's very crazy, very southbound, right off of Salem Street, behind where you're doing the skitching, way.
Where's Murray Road?
Sunset Sterling.
Murray Road is like.
Oh, one and two, I got it, I got it, okay, got it.
It's actually a straight line, that's the problem, it's a straight line.
So it's confused.
My understanding, and I can only tell you what I heard from neighbors on history, but my understanding is that Murray Road was developed first as a street off of Salem Street, and then Murray Court kinda came around the corner, and there were five houses built there. And, uh.
Yeah, okay, there was a cop, the, the street was dead.
A different developer came in and did Harvard and Yale at a later time. And when they did Harvard Road, they put two houses on the side street, they've got houses that are facing Harvard Road, and then they built two houses behind those first two houses that are, have Harvard Road address, and they named that cutoff of Harvard Road, they named it Murray Road. So then we have Murray Road here, and I understood there was a circle and a big pile of sand or something back in the day, and then they had Murray Court here, and Murray Avenue there.
It wasn't too long.
So now you have Murray Avenue coming around the corner, and they opened that up sometime before I moved there, and made it one straight road. So now I live at number two Murray Court, and there's a number two Murray Road over here, and the police and fire can't find us. And then the number two Murray Avenue down here, so there's three number twos, and there's three number ones in this little area of sixteen homes, and it is crazy.
Okay, so.
It's crazy when you know that you called the fire department, and they're down the street, and you're out there like this, and.
Yeah, we heard this when this came out.
You know, have, have you been to the neighbors?
I have.
That's gonna be a biggest thing, I, I don't think this is a big town.
I have, it doesn't, it only affects seven people, seven homes.
Yeah.
That there are five homes that currently are numbered on that map, Murray Court, and then there are two homes on the end that are numbered Murray Road, and they're.
Yeah, we asked you to bring.
The one and two down there is, is numbered opposite to the one and two at the other end, so I'm constantly telling people, mine's the gray house at the corner of Murray Avenue, but there's a white house numbered number two at the corner of Harvard Road, but it's in one straight line street.
So if you did it, you'd wanna keep Murray Avenue the same numbers, and then go around the corner and.
That's my suggestion, is that it goes around the corner, and then there's one street named Murray.
Protocol, protocol comes here, like we asked you to do, thank you for putting this together, okay, we approve it, we send it to you, you put it on the floor? Or can you approve it automatically with the police and fire?
I don't know, I, I've never been involved in this yet.
There, there's some march.
I sent a copy of this.
We've done it before.
A copy of this was sent to the fire department, the proposal that you got.
I had, I had, what, a berry wood.
Yeah.
How many, how many houses did it?
Well, there was quite a few up there.
It, it was, it was, and it's, it's an easy fix, if everybody, it, the logic is there, and what's gonna happen is, is that it's either the residents, like you, okay, bring it forward and we get it done for you, or police and fire are gonna do it mandatory, and you're not gonna have a cha- a choice under eminent domain, they'll just come in and change the name of the street.
Well, I see a couple of solutions to leave, my, my, I'm, in the last paragraph, I said, my suggestion is that you make it all one, so that it's all Murray.
Yeah, sure. And you know what?
But the other solution would be to leave Murray Avenue alone, which they're not being affected anyways, we're just using their name and extending the street.
Yeah. And then put another street name.
You could put another street name, but make it all one street name and forget the court and road.
You know what?
But make it all one.
If it was this board, when, when the other subdivisions came in, like, we would've had it all one street name, so that makes total sense to do it that way.
That's, that's what made sense to me.
Yeah, so.
But that would affect seven homes. The other alternative was, would be to just.
Do they have a copy of this?
Can I just say something before, you know, really, I hate when people think, oh, we just do this, it's gonna affect an awful lot in your life.
I don't know exactly all of that myself, what it's gonna affect, I know I have to change my bills, and I have to change.
That's correct, it's such a licenses, it's your registration, you got, you gotta get in touch with, uh, if you got a mortgage, okay, because that mortgage has to be changed, it has to be refiled, at the registry of deeds and everything, there, there's an awful lot more to this than you think. And, and literally speaking, I mean, you need to start thinking about everything.
And make sure everyone was on board, right?
Yeah.
I wish, on Murray Road and Murray Court.
You know what, Lois, can you get one of these letters to everyone?
I can, I wanted to present it here first.
And a signature sheet.
You guys, a, a signature sheet.
If you've got every, everyone on here, the residents of, of record, or the, yeah, residents of record are living there, okay? And, and for instance, uh, number one, number two, number three, all the way down, uh, over here, and just have them endorse it, and then it would be submitted to the town, everyone on board.
Okay, we really only need the people that were gonna be changed, right, we don't need Murray Avenue people, we just need Murray Court.
No, it'd be seven people.
Right.
I've already talked to some women, I know.
We've had someone to hear that.
The Rudix, the.
That's right.
The Griffiths have been aware of it, um, the new people in number two down the road, I don't know that I've actually talked to them, I don't really know them yet. Um, but the Cavallaro's are aware of it, I mean, we're always exchanging mail, we're always.
Well, I think this is self-explanatory, along with the map, and then add a signature sheet, and then submit it, give it over to the clerk, have a timestamp it, and get it in, and just get it before the, the town.
I think we also have to come up with a list of things they gotta be aware of, and I can't say I can give them a complete list.
I don't know if we can.
What you have to do, because, I mean, it's gonna be a ginormous task, it's any and all bills, magazine subscriptions, whatever shows up in your mailbox.
Well, anytime you move, so when your address is changing, you gotta do the whole change of address.
But you gotta do it with everybody upfront, you gotta, the worst thing's gonna be if somebody's got a mortgage, I can tell you right now, because it's gonna affect, you know, the filings at the registry of deeds, because.
Wouldn't be there, if, if we changed the, if the name of the street actually changed, wouldn't we be able to maybe produce something official that people could use to indicate to a mortgagee or, or registry of deeds and stuff, that the name has changed, but it's still the same property?
Yeah.
Cause if something like that could result from it, from somewhere, I don't know, where, if something official that shows that the name of the street had changed, then that would make, facilitate the process for people.
Here's, here's my one suggestion, you begin to talk about it.
Like, we haven't moved, but our address has changed.
No, wait, if, if you can listen to me a minute, I need to get everybody together, all the streets, and you need to begin to talk about that. Um, whether we just say, okay, we'll let you come in here one night, and we'll put you in a room, and you talk amongst yourselves, when you're all in agreement, then the process can start, but I mean, if all it takes is one person to say, I don't wanna do that, I hate to say it. A great, great idea, like, you, you really gotta have everybody on board.
So you gotta have everybody on board, and you wanna do it, and you couldn't proceed with it?
That's right. All you gotta do is you have one saying, no.
How about the police and fire themselves?
Yeah, they, they have to say, big time, because they're the ninety one.
Police Fire and Trinity got a copy of this, in fact, I talked to somebody over at Trinity today.
What'd they say?
And, uh, I specifically went and asked them, because somebody mentioned it to me, I don't know who I was talking, to see if I could get, I think it was the town clerk, um, to see if I can get a letter from Trinity, so I went over there to ask them if they would actually respond to it, and, and, uh, write a letter of support or something.
Yeah.
Um, I don't remember who told me to do that, but somebody suggested it.
We can ask to the assessors office to.
Oh, I know where it was, it was, uh, where was I earlier this week, I was at, oh, a hearing with the zoning board. By Chesterton, and, uh.
Yeah, what's going on?
This topic.
I got something that.
Oh, we got something?
Chesterton is, they're doing some construction over there.
Well, the Board of Appeals approved it, but literally, we've gotta make them aware, we gotta send them a letter, that they gotta do the site plan review, aquifer protection review.
Is there a?
Let's not get into that.
No, I know.
You also need to talk to the postmaster and judge now, and float this by him, because they're gonna have to eliminate streets and courts and avenues in their mainframe server that sorts the mail out, rolling and a lot like that, and there's a little to that too, to get the, uh, new street in and everything else, just make sure that he's aware of what you wanna do.
Don't tell him you're, you're doing it, or you're going to do it, you gotta make them aware that it could be done, that's all, right now. And don't, don't, don't start the ball rolling.
No, right, yeah, I, I would do this, and just make sure everybody's got a copy of this to start.
And ask them to.
And, and just put a signature sheet.
Let's know what they think, sign it.
Sign it, you sign it, you're done, okay?
Just send it.
So there you go.
Yeah, there are seven.
Get those sent, okay, sign them up, okay, get it to the clerk, timestamp it, so it comes in as an official document, get it back to us, he's gotta get a copy, police and fire, everybody endorsed it, and, and we take the process from there, is the town.
Okay.
But in short, you know, you want everybody's board.
But, well, again, what I say is, be aware of all the changes you're gonna have to make in your life at that point. Okay, and when I say in your life, I'm saying.
I don't know.
Everything that hits that mailbox, everything that possibility could come through you in the future. Alright, just, you gotta start thinking that way, because someone can't find you them. Okay, you'd be surprised what happens later on in life.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm minimizing it in my head because of the Murray, because if we kept the Murray all along for the three things, I mean, Murray Court, the court is gonna change the avenue, and the number's gonna change, and to me, the numbers would be so much clearer than they are now, that, that I think it's worth the change, myself.
It's a good idea.
That I gotta get the other people to go along.
Everything that has a legal portion to it has to be changed legally too, so you gotta think of that too, it's a good idea to do it, uh, for safety reasons and everything. But there aren't a lot of changes, like Jim's saying, and everything that has any legal association, uh, that it, it has to be refiled and changed and everything so that it can be followed through.
I, I'll give you one thing, my way, I changed my phone, phone number. Okay, twenty-five years later, someone who was looking for me found me. You'd be surprised what can happen, you really can.
Yeah, it happens anytime you move, and people may know.
Well, you have a mission.
Like that, especially, some people have done, well, most of, no, not all of them, I can say some people.
I think you can do it, as long as you have the, neighbors are doing it, they understand, you gotta explain it to them, yeah?
Well, I'll tell you, those of us with the numbers one, two, and three, we surely know the problem.
Yeah, I can see that.
They're constantly swapping mail and deliveries and telling people, no, I didn't order pizza, go down the street.
Well, there's three twos in that area.
Yes.
Three twos.
Three ones, twos, and threes.
Two threes.
The biggest thing I can see is that, the day you need the ambulance and they go to the wrong house, and we talk in minutes.
Yes, and it's happened often now.
This is a minor inconvenience.
We're all getting older, I mean, when I moved there, I was twenty years younger than I am now, when I wasn't a kid, taking a facility in a wheelchair, which I am now, and my next door neighbor's in a wheelchair, and, um, all of this stuff, the, it just gets.
Who was the guy that used to live there, that had a little big trailer truck, he used the pockets, tractor trailer and stuff to, on the side?
Oh, that's Mr. Stampler.
What's his last name?
Stampler, S T A M P L E R, his son is still in that house, and he's still there, but he's out in, he's out in, um, Arizona, or Colorado.
It was in the sixties, I used to fix that road and do the catch faces and stuff, I was on the highway back in sixty-six, yeah.
Yeah, that's Mr. Stampler, he's still around, in fact, he's here now, um, he's visiting with his son right now, his son is still in that house, and so.
Okay.
Mr. Ducks.
Alright, thank you, and it's a good idea.
Yep, just get the sign offs, stamp.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just see and see if we can.
I would bring.
Get people together.
If three, three copies of everybody's signature sheet, and those have one sign and make, make a copy of it, and when you go to the clerk, get three time stamped, you get one, the clerk gets one, and get it over to the selectman.
And go to the assessors office, just.
Yeah.
Cut, cut the, then. Get it registered, get it certified, a voters list that covers everybody on that street, it makes it legal that you notify them all.
Okay.
Uh, before we leave, um, Chesterton did receive Steve's ability to go ahead on adding another building, I guess, last week, and, um.
How did that happen?
Only one before the zoning board appeals.
Yeah, like whatever, the site review.
Well, here, there is a problem, if you read the site plan review, there's nothing in there that says the zoning board has gotta tell them to do it.
No, it's the applicant that's supposed to, you know.
I, I understand that, but we've had situations in the past, they just walk right by, and unless you tell them.
Okay.
Okay, so my suggestion is to write them a nice letter, and allow them.
Who's their engineer, do we know?
I have no clue, who, who, who to even address it to, which I.
Yeah, me either.
So.
His name is O'Neil, I think, O'Neil.
Well, we can find out from the.
Yeah.
They sent out a letter to the abuddies, I'm an abut, I was at their meeting last week.
Okay.
Um, and what they're doing is, they have a building up in front.
Yeah.
And then there's one in here, and there's a street between it, and there's a building down here that goes like this, and they wanna build something here, and they wanna build something, oh, wait a minute, this building goes like this. There's two connections that they wanna build, they wanna square off the two buildings in the back, they have two buildings like this.
Fifteen feet either, either side, and.
And they wanna fill in the blanks, so that it makes one big square, and that the two back buildings are connected to each other, so they're not gonna change the footprint, basic footprint, they're just gonna fill in an area over here, and an area over here between these two buildings to add more square footage, like, they got, they've already got this building, and they've already got this building.
Yeah, they're filling in like a courtyard type of.
Right, but wasn't, wasn't it explained that it's zoned in two different districts? And the problem was that one was. And the problem was that one was business and one was residential. And that's why they had to go in front of the zoning is because of that.
Yes, what they were trying to do is they have a parking, um, thing. If you look at that map you've got, where our homes are, down Murray Avenue. All those homes coming down the odds, the even side of Murray Avenue, their backyard is Chesterton. They have a fence between them and Chesterton. And there's a parking lot behind that garage. And that lot right now is like this piece of paper coming down this way. They wanna add it down here. And put in more lighting and put in like about sixty more parking spaces down there, or forty-five or sixty or something like that, more parking spaces.
Changes.
But the zoning, the zoning area goes like this through that area. And only five thousand of the six, seventeen thousand square feet they want is zoned industrial. So they have control over what they do with that five thousand square feet. And they had to go to the zoning board to get control over the other eleven thousand or twelve thousand square feet that they wanted to build into a parking lot.
See, that, that's a major site review planning process.
Um, we.
deadlines too, yeah.
Couple of us as neighbors were there. I was one of them that was there in, in number eight Murray Court, which is backs up to the parking lot, Murray Avenue.
Where's their, yeah, were their engineers?
I don't remember who the name is. It's funny because I had it in this folder, cause I mean, I come to City Hall.
All we have to do is contact with zoning secretary.
Yeah.
She'll tell them.
Okay.
I can show you the map. This is the map for it.
That's, that's the map for us.
It, it's the map from Murray Court and Murray Avenue and Chesterton. Chesterton is all this land in here.
Oh, that's your map?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought it was a Chester.
No.
They must've submitted a-
And Chesterton's, um, zoning comes like this.
They revised it so that everything was in the industrial zone.
The zoning did not approve that.
Who was the engineer?
Put a parking lot on that block.
For the people, they, they switched it around. Everything was in the industrial.
So Chesterton did their own engineering?
Yes.
Yeah.
So they have an in-house engineer?
I, I need to be with, to tell you something else too.
Give it a buzz.
I didn't tell you about Murray Avenue. If you look at this map, this is a copy of your assessors map. Okay, it's forty, forty-one, forty-seven and forty-eight, I guess, down here and they taped together. Um, this is Murray Court over here, where I've got.
Here.
I got, yeah, right here. And there used to be a circle there. That circle doesn't exist. Okay? But at one point in time, I got my map backwards. It's this way. At one point in time, this little piece in here is designated as Murray Road.
Yeah, it, it.
On Murray Avenue.
You, you could get through there years ago, but today I doubt it's probably.
You can't. And what they did is they wanted an access road or something to that property out in back. But now that Chesterton owns it all and Chesterton already has a road coming out of here. Like this is all their parking lot over here that I was just talking about. And they wanted to extend it back here and we're not letting them because their zoning cuts it. Well, actually it just cuts it way up here.
So ZDA denied?
But they got a, a road that comes over here and a, and a chain of tents over here on Santa Street. So that you can actually exit the property in an emergency. You can exit the property to Santa Street. Right up here into the backyard, Chesterton where their buildings are.
Yeah, once in a while, all the people do a walk through there down the road and exercise.
Yeah, they used to walk down through here. Now they pretty much walk around because this isn't, nobody's doing anything with this. It's just all wooded in at this point, this, this area behind us that used to be designated as part of an extension. It's a paper road.
Yeah, it is.
You'll know what that means, Mr. Reddell.
Tell the thing.
They used to dump stuff on the highway without ever going and getting out. There's still, there's everything else. We've cleaned it out a few years in there.
Yeah, oh, it's a mess there now. Maybe TV's are even having problems getting any of the, the illegal three.
Somebody got a new subdivision you want us to?
Yeah, I do.
A new subdivision? I'll go back.
No, I was just, questionable procedure.
So I'm ready. I just got.
You said when I come back, I have to have a bond, right?
Yeah, the language of the bond.
Just the language. All right, that's, they're not gonna get, they're not gonna get a bond till it's voted.
Exactly. Right, but we gotta see.
The language.
What?
They approve the amount.
Let's put it this way. You're the first person to get a bond in twelve to fourteen years in this town instead of the cash passport?
Cash, what do you tell them? They had to put up fifty-four, I mean, five, five hundred forty thousand dollars cash.
What in any town? And then as your milestones go, you pull out. So if you get a hundred thousand dollars worth of site work, a hundred thousand down the next day?
Yeah, but that, that figure's so inflated. That's ridiculous.
Denise won't accept unless she signs.
Signatures on the. Any, any other bills that you, you pay.
And the work that you're submitting.
You'd have to contact.
All right, right, what I was just saying to all, cause I thought you guys said you have to come in with a horn.
In their own life.
And, and they're not gonna do that till they get.
Who's your lender?
But the biggest thing is you have to figure out if you have a mortgage, would be a lender.
Who hacked me in?
And let them know that.
Who run a service.
Street is gonna.
Okay, good. Get that too.
So they'll put the number of the form, endorse or.
Is they gonna change that?
Endorse the plan and then.
And then they get the, they get the, either letter or credit or bond, whichever they choose.
And then.
That's why I'm saying, I think this is.
And then there's just the language that we get to see.
And you think.
Yeah, you say you want it for seven days and running.
It's like everybody, if everybody first says, okay.
With the town in the driver's seat.
Scott Green in progress.
Everybody has to have.
None of the bond.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Yep.
It's all in time.
Okay, what else we got?
You end up, you know, I don't know when you do it, but they're explaining.
Uh, actually, it's a copy. It goes to Water and Sewer.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's a copy that they're working out there and they pulled this out and, uh, so for the record, Old Town Oil just brought in. And they've done quite a bit, Jim, of work out there.
You might have to write down.
Just, just a copy of the Old Town Oil letter.
Hold on, hold on, well, I can't do two things at once, okay? And, um, first off, we were just talking about Chesterton, okay? I gave you a mocked up letter. Okay, we need to make contact with them. I tried to keep it as low key as I possibly can. I, I, we need to find some, somebody, you know, that.
I can call them tomorrow.
Okay, calling them was one thing. I think we need to put in writing to them.
Well, yeah, I'd like to find out some information first. If, if it's true they have their own engine, in-house engineering, they need to come to, have, come to the.
That's what I'm trying to say. The next meeting is.
Yeah, next, next meeting.
If you wanna take it from there, fine, but get it done. Don't let it blunt, okay?
Jump on to it.
Uh, we need to do that, all right?
Yep. Yeah, I did call them today, so I would, all right, so that's that. Jump on that tomorrow.
Okay, what's the next thing?
Old Town Oil just sent us a copy of the letter they sent to the Water and Sewer on what they pulled out of there and what they're doing.
Okay, so we're talking about Old Town Oil.
Which is sixteen Yelson Street.
Yeah?
Actually, it's a different one on the house he bought, but we were notified by the Water and Sewer three months ago that the water is using.
That they put a line.
And that they weren't supposed to because in our memorandum of decision, we put down that no water service was to be at the garage he has.
Right.
So this is a letter responding to the demand to drip it out.
So what, what are they going to do?
Well, they just submitted it to, he submitted it over there and there's no response from Water and Sewer then.
From Water and Sewer.
Okay, so he's talking to Water and Sewer.
Correct, and we just copied on it.
Okay.
No action required.
Okay. I got one last thing.
Yeah.
And that is.
Thank you, Lois.
I'm just gonna pass these out to each and every one of you. I was not a member of the board when these meetings were posted, okay? There are no tapes, no discs and no written minutes for these meetings at this point. So we've been in contact, uh, with Denise, with town council, and town council says you can do it from memory.
Okay.
In some cases, some of these things don't tell you a hell of a lot of the posting of what went on. And if there's a posting that doesn't say anything, my suggestion is we just write, we're gonna have to write canceled on that posting and sign it and date it and give it back to the town clerk. That would be the resolution of that issue.
Uh, Jim, I'm, you already saw this when you gave it to me, man. This first one, the judge one.
Yeah.
And I don't remember that one, but I do really.
What I'm asking everybody to do, okay, if you don't, write on the back what you remember about it.
Okay.
Okay, and then give it back to me and then I'll, I'll get something typed over.
The only time I posted is when Bob's asked me to post, like.
Yeah.
So there was something with outstanding bills that were owed to Woody.
No.
Like, let me, uh, this, this one, Bob, just to get a little information on Bobby to help me write, write down. This is one I posted. Which one's it? Four, five, eleven.
Yeah.
All right, the only thing we were doing back then in two thousand eleven was Jim bussing at Federal Way was he had to put the finish coat on and also run a fire line down the side. And Eric Hopper was involved because he was doing that building at the very end across from Burke Plumbing.
Yeah.
And then he did a storage building later on and back, but with Jim bussing, him being involved, that was when he was gonna put the final coat. And we were making him put a call access down the inside of the roof to the back on the lead.
Now, who was typing the lines back then? Was this?
Look, uh.
It was, um, Gal Georgetown.
Yeah, Janine.
Janine, yeah.
Okay.
Dionne, Dionne.
Okay, yeah, all right.
And Bob Grassel, the only thing he did in town was Pinot Estates. So I can remember that on that one. That was Federal Way was Jim bussing with the finish coat. And Bob Grassley, he had to talk about something with Pinot Estates.
Okay.
Then the next one, on April twenty-seventh, Jim bussing again and Woody Cammett, so he, and Eric Hopper again, so we were talking. And this was two thousand eleven too, so it had to be the same thing. With Eric Hopper's building, Jim bussing on the roadway and Woody Cammett was the engineer at that time. So that covers two. Oh, yeah, and you were talking to, uh, Jim bussing about cleaning that drain out.
Drain out.
Exactly, yes, and it runs across. Yeah, I think the talk was already put on on that first one. I think you were more into the. Recovering yourself? Oh, yeah. I'm glad you remembered that probably, cause. Well, I was trying to think. You're now, but.
It was across the island.
Yes, it went across the highway. It was clean. He, he had a hydro flush on the roadway and dig out the other side, the outlet. Cause I'm trying to think, eleven, two thousand eleven, the talk was on, I was. And then this other one on October was just general discussion. I used to write that down if there wasn't anything on the agenda. And the A and I was if people had an A and I, they would come in and get a, a quick approval. So I don't think we did anything on that date. That's just some normal things I used to do.
What you need to write on the back is, okay.
What we know.
What you know, what you remembered, okay, be clearly how you write it because these have to be transcribed at that point. Okay, if you feel as though the meeting was canceled, that's fine. What I want you to do is just on the back, write the word canceled. All right, then.
Uh, on that particular one, we didn't cancel. We just opened it and there was nothing to discuss and so I'll just write that.
We still had time. We still would've had a tape on that, so, but anyway.
Well, there's, let me tell you right now, we, I've gone through the tapes. I've talked to Janine.
What did Janine say?
Janine, her, she's got a whole new computer at this point, so she couldn't recover anything. Um, there was some draft stuff that we found.
Yeah.
That was never finalized, so I got Amy to take the draft stuff. I helped her clean that up a little bit.
Same meeting?
No, it wasn't those meetings, it was other meetings. We, we had problems going back a number of years.
Okay.
Okay, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen?
We're all straightened out.
So we're all straightened out now. It's just these are the last ones.
Okay.
I remember, that's what it says.
All right, so, so that's what you want us to do?
Bills.
Yeah.
I remember that. Woody had some back bills over.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think you didn't come and you called me and I posted it.
Okay, yeah.
It's the only time I really posted. And I remember that. The business says engineering review bill, so he, remember when he was behind?
Yeah.
A few people had, you know, straightened up.
Yeah. Okay, so that's what we'll do, Jim. We'll, we'll put the, what we know and then get these back to you.
Yep, that's all we.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Second.
All right, so meeting adjourned and out of order.
But we need to do a signed in sheet at every meeting that we like.